Not through walls and understanding that the world and our countries are islands, but the other way around. It's by building bridges and uniting us on what makes us closer that we will achieve a better world.
The Mexican governors say they plan to meet with local immigrant rights groups to see how they can help Los Angeles immigrants with relationships in Washington uncertain. At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
A USC study shows more than 40% of LA's immigrant population is from Mexico. Turning now to a long neglected corner of North Hollywood that's coming back to life as the area gets a new neighbor. The NoHo West development will bring jobs, entertainment, business, places to live, fun, and much more. Anna Marcos reports.
The handprints of the kids from Laurel Hall School will be forever engraved in cement at the future NoHo West Center. And that's good news for this abandoned mall and the community of Laurel Grove. The mall was shut down when Macy's closed 100 stores last year, but it had been in a slow decline for years before that.
It was a successful mall until the Northridge earthquake in 1994. Much of the mall had to be demolished. And so obviously, this has been underutilized space for over 20 years.
But soon, the future NoHo West will open with a cutting-edge mix of shops, public plazas, restaurants, theaters, and open green space, along with a promenade and tree-lined Main Street.
What we plan on doing is we have a community gathering space in the Central Plaza area. And we plan on having farmers markets and kids movie nights and, for instance, bringing if the World Cup's playing, bringing in food trucks and having events to bring the community together.
The project will also become home to hundreds of residents with more than 600 residential units in the works.
With this development, we're going to create a destination that people will visit from all over the East Valley to shop, to live, to work. It really is going to be an economic renaissance for the entire area.
And of course, those handprints will become part of the permanent decor at NoHo West. The project is set to be complete towards the end of 2019. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
NoHo West will be home to about 60 stores and restaurants and will also include another 10 office tenants. Major changes are also happening in the area around Pershing Square. Hundreds of new apartments are being built for people looking to finally make the move to downtown. Gil Reyes has more. Gil?
Yes, Yana, better late than never, right? Actually, the LA City Council approved this project back in 2008, but the Great Recession torpedoed it. Flash forward nine years later, and city leaders break ground on the second phase of this development complex, which will have 660 residential units when completed. Park living in downtown is about to pick up, way up. Coming soon, a pair of multi-story apartment buildings across the street from downtown's most historic park, Pershing Square.
We're excited about LA. We're excited about putting capital here.
It's called the Park Fifth Project. Developers break ground on the larger of its two buildings, 24 stories tall, with nearly 350 apartment units when finished. Meanwhile, crews continue work on the first building, which began construction last summer. Seven stories on that one, with more than 310 units planned. With much of Los Angeles sorely lacking green space, downtown councilman Jose Wezar mentions his favorite amenity. And like the rest of downtown, it too is changing.
Most beautiful thing about this, it's right across the street from Pershing Square Park. You know, it's going under some renovation. We have a task force called the Pershing Square Renew. We just adopted new designs that will flatten the park, make it visible from all sides of the park, and really make it a destination point. So downtown LA is moving. It's not the same downtown that people used to know. Five years ago, the light switch was turned off about 6:00 PM. Nobody was here. Lot more activity, and we're getting that downtown we've always wanted.
Expected completion date for Park Fifth, early 2019. Across the street from Pershing Square Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Park Fifth Project will also have 13,000 square feet reserved for retail space. And just a few blocks to the west, even more growth is happening in downtown LA thanks to a joint American-Chinese venture. Rasha Goel has more on the recent addition that combines a new development with a touch of LA history.
City leaders are celebrating the opening of Hotel Indigo. The hit boutique brand will be operated by Intercontinental Hotels Group and is part of the $1 billion Metropolis Development in downtown Los Angeles.
You know, a few years ago, you could turn off the light switch in downtown LA. There was nobody here. People who came here to work would leave in the evening, and it was a ghost town. And now it's alive. People walking the streets, more people living here.
You created 400 permanent jobs, 3,000 construction jobs. There'll be about 5.5 million hours worked on this project. That's about a half a billion dollars in payroll to people who live here, who will then spend that money here and recycle that money here.
The 18-story hotel with 350 hotel rooms is intended to serve growing hotel demand near the LA Convention Center and Staples Center.
We can bring more conventions when we have more hotel rooms, and this will accomplish just that.
10 years ago, 10,000 people lived here. Today, 55,000. The year 2040, we expect 125,000 people to live in downtown LA.
Indigo's interiors weave together elements from LA's history, starting with the late 1800s through the 1920s and incorporating the early days of the movie industry.
This is the most happening spot in California, and we'd argue that it's one of the most happening spots across the United States because we've got the energy and we've got the availability. And now we're demonstrating with projects like this that we can make things happen.
Hotel Indigo is located on Francisco Street, north of the LA Live Entertainment Center and south of the Financial District. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Switching gears now as we take a look back on LA's history. Many ethnicities helped shape our city, but not without their own challenges. The African-American community played a large role and has a long story to tell of its time in LA, one often filled with times of unrest and discrimination. A panel event at a South LA library made an attempt to tell part of that story. Anna Marcos has more.
Snipers who continued to shoot from rooftops.
See Watts riots, Daddy warned. Daddy warned, terrible these riots where we burn our houses down. When we burn our houses down, ash is all that's left in our hearts.
You are listening to the personal stories of poets and authors on life and the black experience, especially what that experience was like during the riots that erupted in Watts in 1965 and in South LA in 1992.
I'm a poet and artist first, so I'm not a scholar. I'm here to just, as I said, meditate, to think about my life. I was here in '92.
The panel at the Vernon Branch Library called Black Fire Riot and Revolt in Los Angeles was also based partly on a 2001 book called Seeking El Dorado: African-Americans in California. Author Lynn Thompson tells the story of her dad migrating to California at a time of rampant discrimination.
Because they were going to California, the Golden State, maybe they didn't know many towns within its borders were sundowners. And there, ain't no niggers allowed, was the policy.
And there was the time Thompson's father finally bought a house, only to have it taken away for construction of the Santa Monica Freeway in 1959.
Daddy, who only raised his voice when he knew he was right, said, "His offer is just another name for 40 acres in Mississippi." So we had to move.
There are men, and there are women with sacred places inside.
For author Peter Harris, who's written several books, life as an artist is also about helping art heal once community.
Also, I'm interested in the theme of black men and joy. And I'm driven by a question, what is a happy black man?
From riots and unrest to joy may be a long journey, but for these authors, art and the written word provide a path and a way out. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Author Peter Harris has written The Black Man of Happiness and Bless the Ashes, while author Lynn Thompson has written Beg No Pardon. Over at Union Station, Metro's effort to make LA the transit capital of the world got on track. Rasha Goel has the latest on new rail cars that aim to enhance the passenger experience.
This signing between officials from Metro and China Railway Rolling Stock Corporation, also known as CRRC, marks the start of a $178 million purchase of 64 rail cars for upgrading and improving the LA subway system.
Our current trains are now nearing the end of their useful life of approximately 25 years.
CRRC is headquartered in Beijing and is the world's largest supplier of rail transit equipment.
The product has been supplied to 102 countries and regions.
Of the 64 rail cars, 30 of them will be used to replace existing trains on the red lines and the purple line. The remaining 34 will be used in the new Purple Line Extension from Mid-Wilshire to Beverly Hills.
We anticipate nearly 50,000 weekday boardings once all seven new stations, subway stations, to Westwood are built. We also anticipate there will be nearly 80,000 new daily trips on the entire metro rail system as a result of the opening of the Purple Line Extension.
Officials say the new rail cars will help improve the passenger experience.
These new trains will feature active line maps that show passengers where they are at that particular moment along the line. Each car will feature LED displays that will provide passenger travel information.
In addition, the contract will help create more local jobs.
We have approximately 10% of all the jobs that will be created will go and be targeted for disadvantaged workers. And that is very, very important to us.
With the first rail car being delivered by the spring of 2020 and the rest within the following year, Metro is moving ahead on the right track. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
This contract also adheres the federal government's Buy America provisions, requiring 60% of component parts to be American-made, creating more job opportunities locally. Also at Union Station, the iconic landmark was buzzing as a so-called pop-up barber shop offered haircuts and shaves, all for a good cause. Anna Marcos takes a look at how the event aims to stop world hunger with a flick of a razor.
The hot towel here is to open the pores up, soften the hairs, get it ready for the shave.
You're looking at a vintage, old-fashioned barber shop come to life in the middle of the iconic waiting room at Union Station. Of course, this is just a pop-up barber shop for one day. The event is for a good cause.
Yeah, we just come in and give shaves, haircuts, beard trims.
I have not seen my hair yet, so fingers crossed.
The barbers come from the Svelte Barber Shop, a local business, and haircuts and shaves are an easy $25 each. Funds raised at the one-day event go to Heifer International, a charity that works to stop poverty and world hunger.
I saw this online, and I thought it'd be a good time to get a haircut, help raise some money for a good charity.
Things are getting a little mummy-like here, but according to the barber, it's the only way to shave.
Do you know that you look like a mummy?
I can only imagine.
Feels good?
Feels great.
This is called a straight edge razor. Or a cutthroat.
All this male pampering, cutthroats and all, has a historic origin at Union Station. There was once a real barber shop here when the station opened in 1939. It thrived in the 40s before closing.
I'd like to see a real barber shop come back. You can see we're repopulating the station with restaurants. It's really becoming much more of a destination for people. Well, Union Station is an architectural icon.
And so, this historic railroad pit stop just might one day go back to its heyday glory. Back when a genteel barber, a cut, a shave, and a train ticket, all went hand in hand. But for now, it's making a difference in stopping world hunger. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on the charity, visit heifer.org. One local all-boys Catholic high school in downtown LA is getting a touch of Hollywood as community members break ground for a new building. Anna Marcos has more on the new addition at Cathedral High School and what it means for the students' future.
This demolition at Cathedral High may be the star of the show right now, but soon the wrecking ball will make way for the real star, a new visual and performing arts theater center at the All Boys Catholic High School.
That's going to bring a new era of curriculum to this high school, who was doing performing arts out of a shack.
Over 70 years ago, our beloved annex was built to serve our students. So a lot of history is behind us.
My most memorable moments were the ones that I had with the brothers I made in my video production class, making Star Wars parody videos and anchoring for our morning broadcasts.
The newer, bigger, better art center will provide more space for creative arts, TV production, music, and acting performances, and includes a state-of-the-art theater.
Let's invest in young people, who if they get a shot at the arts or math or whatever it is, will have doors open to them, and they'll be able to reach for the stars and follow their dreams.
The school aims to create leaders in the community, but city officials say this new addition will make them leaders in arts and culture.
For us, it's super important to support the arts at a time when Donald Trump is divesting from arts and culture.
A little music showmanship from the students and a theatrical water blessing from the priest. And why not? They are welcoming an art center made for Hollywood. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
From all the bells and whistles of a new facility to an old-fashioned game of ball, some kids at Grand Park got a lesson in playing ball as the LA Dodgers showed them that you don't need a lot to enjoy the game. Gil Reyes has more.
No baseball field, no problem for these children making the most of what they have with help from the Dodgers organization and Major League Baseball.
To make sure the kids understand that it doesn't take 18 players, a Major League Field, a scoreboard to play our game.
Good. Nice throw.
MLB's Play Ball Initiative shows kids they can still enjoy different parts of the game at the playground or in their front yards. That includes base running, fielding, and batting. 150 kids show us how in downtown's Grand Park. Among them, Benjamin Murillo and classmates from Solano Elementary School.
I learned baseball and how to be active.
And that's important, why?
So they don't just sit in the house all day.
Besides exercise, practicing also builds character.
They can set standards for themselves and figure out ways, how can I accomplish this goal? And feel how good it feels to work hard for something and accomplish something as well.
And that's a game anyone can play with or without a baseball field. In downtown's Grand Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Major League Baseball has hosted 250 Play Ball programs over the past year. The mayor announces his action plan for the city during his State of the City. One of LA's oldest parks gets a new upgrade, and spring has sprung in the San Fernando Valley. All these stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti said the State of the City is undeniably strong while also acknowledging the need to do more to help the city's most vulnerable communities. Speaking from the City Hall Council Chamber, Garcetti delivered his annual State of the City speech the same day he released his proposed 2017-2018 budget. He addressed two major financial priorities: a plan to increase spending on homeless initiatives to $178 million, up from last year's $138 million, and raise $100 million a year and leverage up to $300 million every year for affordable housing.
I know, my friends, we can do this together. And we can drive down the price of housing in every district, in every neighborhood of our city. And when we do, we will preserve the quality of life in our communities. We will reduce traffic because people are closer to their jobs and their families. We will help the people who revitalize neighborhoods not get kicked out of those neighborhoods.
Other key points: By the end of 2018, the city will deploy an earthquake warning system on every corner. The city will respond to all graffiti requests within a day. The proposed budget includes $17 million for Vision Zero, Garcetti's plan to reduce traffic deaths, and the city will continue to work toward the Department of Water and Power's goal of being coal-free by 2025. The Department of Wrecking Parks, along with Council District 1, celebrated the grand opening of a new synthetic sports field at MacArthur Park. Located in the Westlake District area of the city, MacArthur Park is one of the city's oldest parks. The new synthetic field was once a synthetic meadow designed for passive activities, but is now transformed into a certified sports field. Over in Council District 3, folks celebrated the season with a spring festival held at the Reseda Recreation Center. Plenty of food, rides, and activities kept kids and their parents entertained. As usual, the huge Ferris wheel was a hit with festival goers, and so were the funnel Well, next to the hipster bars of Silver Lake is a modest art space with big ambitions. Gil Reyes shows us what's happening inside the Neutra Institute Museum.
As much as she tried, artist Ava Perez could not get pregnant, so she turned her frustration into an art exhibit featuring eggs, petri dishes, and all things biological about female fertility. A show called Fertile Infertility is one of the quirky programs you'll often find in this gallery, owned by renowned architect Dion Neutra, located on Glendale Boulevard in the music and arts community of Silver Lake.
This is uniquely located for what it is, and I think maybe one of the reasons why it's so popular.
It is the neighborhood museum you've probably never heard of unless you lived in this community. But Dion Neutra's Neutra Institute Museum has been staying busy, booking some 50 shows over the past three years, and we're told 2017 is pretty much booked solid. The property across the street from the popular Red Lion Tavern is on the National Registry of Historic Places. It was built in 1950 by Neutra and his dad, Richard Neutra, as a workspace. The elder Neutra, an icon of modernist architecture, who designed several world-famous homes on this very site. Today, son Dion is on a quest to expand the gallery into a satellite museum, an eastside extension for either the much larger LACMA or Broad Museum, miles away.
So if anybody listening knows Mr. Broad, I'm here. I would love to have a conversation. So there's lots of opportunities here. I need the tenants to take spaces. We advertise on Craigslist, so check us out on Craigslist. You can see the conditions.
Possible new life for a hidden treasure in Silver Lake and one of architect Dion Neutra's babies. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
For info on upcoming shows or renting a workspace, call the number on your screen at 310-795-4768. Well, check out the unique home of historian Charles Lummis. LA's finest chefs and dishes take center stage during the LA Food Bowl and help clean up one of LA's most eccentric neighborhoods. All this and this week's things to do. Step inside the humble kingdom of Charles F. Lummis, journalist, photographer, and historian. In 1884, the 26-year-old journalist walked over 2,000 miles from his home in Ohio to California to start a new job as city editor of the Los Angeles Times. After he settled into his new environment, he set out to build his dream home, El Elsal, known today as the Lummis House. Join a guided tour of the Lummis House with a docent and an LA historian. Highlights include a tower constructed from boulders, windows fused with photographs, old utility poles used as beams, and Lummis himself interred in the wall. Every door, table, and chair has a story to tell. The tour takes place Saturday, May 6, from 10 to 11 a.m. For more, visit atlasobscura.com. The Los Angeles Times announced the launch of Food Bowl, an annual, month-long festival celebrating the city's dynamic and influential food scene, taking place throughout the month of May. Centered in Los Angeles, the festival will bring together the best in local dining experiences while promoting social awareness about food waste and hunger. LA's largest culinary event to date, Food Bowl, will include special programs with internationally renowned chefs during rare U.S. appearances. For more, visit lafoodbowl.com. Join the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District for a huge neighborhood cleanup. Volunteers are invited to pitch in on this beautification effort in Los Feliz Village, a unique district known for its fiercely independent creative spirit, as well as its diverse businesses like familiar restaurants and services and vintage and collectible shops. Come on out and make certain this neighborhood gem that is neatly tucked between Griffith Park and Barnstall Art Park maintains its quiet charm. The cleanup takes place on Sunday, May 7, from 9 to 12. For more, visit losfeliz.biz. And that's a look at some things to do. And before we go, the kids at Grand Park had so much fun playing with the Dodgers, we thought we'd share with you some more fun from the event. Take a look.
So I say D. I say D-O. D-O-D. D-O-D-G. D-O-D-G-E-R-S. Team, 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 O. I say O-M. O-M-A. O-M-A-L. O-M-A-L-L-Y. Oh, really? No, O'Malley. Sandy Koufax, oh, my dries, dear Maury Wills, I love you so. And we defy, defy the J-I. J-I-N. J-I-N-T. J-I-N-T-S. Giants! Level! Orlando Sepeda is at bat with the bases, John. Orlando Sepeda with a one, bam, he hit a grand slam in the very first inning.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
911 emergency, operator 271.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, May 2nd. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonnen, Gayeno, Sadio Anglender, Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rue Wesson. Eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Coretts moves. Weezer seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
If I could ask all to please rise for our flag salute will be led today by Mr. David Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Why don't we run through the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 2 to June 14th, and items 1A, E, F, P, and V to May 31st.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
V. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full, items 1D, J, and U. And additionally, the department recommends that the lien amount on 1K be reduced to $14,044.26 as the lien has been partially paid.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, there are cards on item 1.
Continue.
Items 2 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for items 6 through 10 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration, and a corrected planning and land use management committee report for item 3 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, specials. Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, hold 3 on the desk, please.
We'll hold item 3 per Mr. O'Farrell's request. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
They said 19 is going to vote refer to committee. Andrew said that.
Continue.
Items 14 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please hold item 21 on the desk also.
Item 21. Let's refer item 19 back to the planning committee. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, and 24.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on whatever's, whatever, what is remaining. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue. Mr. Weezer.
Fourth with, please.
Number 22, fourth with. Continue.
And, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Our item's called special.
Okay, let's send item 11, fourth with, as well. What number was that?
25.
Okay. 25, fourth with. No, it's my understanding there's a card on item 25. Okay, I want to call up Mr. Doug Haynes and Wyatt Valentine.
Good morning, council members and President. My name is Doug Haynes. I'm with the La Mirada and Neighborhood Association. I came down here today because yesterday we received notice that the court once again invalidated this council's approvals at the Target at Sunset and Western Project. That's now the third time in nine years that the approvals have been rescinded. In each of those instances, we repeatedly explained at each and every hearing that you were violating the law, yet you proceeded anyway. It's important to remember that Target originally proposed a co-compliant, one-story store at the site, but was stopped by then-councilman Garcetti, who sought to gut our specific plan. Target then commenced construction, knowing that they were losing court, and there need to be real consequences to such behavior. Yet clearly, no lessons have been learned by either Target or the city. So we have an opportunity now for a legal co-compliant project to proceed if this city and our councilman, Mitchell Farrell, will work with us towards that goal, and we hope that would happen instead of delaying once again for years a project that both we and the community would like to see, but as long as it follows the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning, council members, especially Mike Bonnen. My name is Wyatt. I'm from Venice, and this is my wife, Lisa. She's with me here. I'm here to advocate for home sharing in Venice. I'm 58 years old and a Venice native, and I grew up in the home that I still live in. My 17 years I had a career as producing television commercials. Five years ago, I was laid off, and it became clear I was aged out of my career. I found it impossible to find a job. Then my wife and I experienced costly medical issues. On top of everything else, our savings dwindled, and I feared we could not pay our property taxes. We had $300 in the bank. My wife suggested we try renting out the extra bedrooms to make ends meet. We've been doing Airbnb now for eight months in the home that we live in. We depend on reservations from the three bedrooms, and we couldn't make it on a 180-day cap. Please do not limit the number of bedrooms we can book, and please lift the cap. We've been able to pay our taxes and health insurance, and we've made home improvements, including painting and landscaping. We enjoy sharing the history of Venice with our guests from all over the world. Our home was built in the 1940s, and we've been able to preserve its charming elegance, and our guests love it. Home sharing has shaped our home.
Thank you very much. Okay, can I have Mr. Eric Previn up on my screen? Mr. Previn, you have items 1, 14, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 25.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2. And 1 is the lien item, and I took note that you've reduced, I think it was one age, by $1,400. And of course, that's appreciated. But remember that this is still a $14,000 penalty against this individual in the district of Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, one of the poorest districts. So I would caution once again that the council reconsidered this, and it came up in the budget hearings to possibly move this to a commissioner hearing, where the building and safety commissioner is now. That is not what we meant. We did not mean move it out of the public view so you can go after people privately or in a less well-attended event. We meant don't bring cases that have been lying in the files for a long time in order to make up for the revenue due to the mismanagement. So that was really sort of where we were coming from. Regarding that Target item that is on the agenda, I just wanted to say that Mr. O'Farrell has done a really, really nice job of working for Target. But what I would suggest is that he return the contributions to the individual, Mr. Masiborsky, or one of the many LLCs that over-contributed, which was a finding by Heather, your treasured "Hey, Heather!" from the Ethics Commission. So I do think that it's expected that he will do that. Everybody else has been penalized left, right, and center. He just needs to give it back. It's not much of a penalty. He didn't know, he claims, which is absolute nonsense. That's what we call a "Weezer." How many corruption scandals does one have to have before the council member, the person taking all the money and washing it into their self-promotion account, notices? So I just think, thank you. The Seabreeze article in the LA Times explains what I'm talking about for those who don't follow. Now, Mr. Nazarian at item number 10 is bringing forward a very brave motion.
You're not on Mr. 10. You're not on item 10, Mr. Previn.
I thought I was.
I gave you the items, and you know what they are. 14, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 25. So you can speak.
All right, well, then, number 14 is Mr. Kevin James is being reinstalled till 2022, I believe. This is, this is a guy who ran against Garcetti. He was from the other side evidently. He got in, and he was appointed to this jo, he got appointed to this job after losing to Mr. Garcetti. This guy runs a good meeting, because what he does, sir, in contrast to the way you run meetings and the others in this group, Krikorian is particularly pernicious. He lets people speak, because he seems to value, it's a very interesting and paradigmatic shift. He seems to value input from the public. And whereas I think you all should value it in the same way, this man runs the Public Works Meeting in a slightly different manner. I would ask that Mr. Faubel take a close look at that and report back. And with that, I would simply recede my time. There's a lot of people here who are very eager for today's budget hearings at 1:00 p.m. I will say that neighborhood empowerment has some nerve, but we'll talk about that at the appropriate time. Thank you, sir. Now, we're not doing general public comment.
Let's give him his general public comment.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of the general public comment, I'll try to explain why I was so frustrated by the neighborhood empowerment comments yesterday at the budget hearing. I guess, you know, when I hear that of the $37,000 that are apportioned to each of the neighborhood councils, there are 96 of them. It's almost, it's a lot of money. And every year, you forget that you gave and took away $5,000, so you have to throw in another half a million near the end of the year. And then, what we learned recently is that 1.4 million of that never gets spent, because they make it so hard to spend it. This year, she said, we're up to 2.4 million has not been spent. So she's slightly excited, this is Grace Liu, the GM, that maybe there'll be a little more that they can put into various initiatives that they're working on. $30,000 of a $37,000 budget was spent on translation in one neighborhood council. I would like to know which neighborhood council, and I would like to know how that is possible, because that sounds to me like something that is worth Faubel inspection. Faubel is the lawyer for the city attorney who looks closely at wrongdoing and then simply walks away and does nothing about it. So thank you, sir. Have a nice day.
Do we have Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman? Do we have Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman? If so, let me see her on the chart. You have items one, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, all the way to K. Items fourteen, twenty, and twenty-four, Donna.
I stuck all of one, because I wanted to make sure one was there. So it's just stick it one all together. Uh, let's see. I wanted to say that the city council is, um, doing this to get revenue. It's really unfair ways, they like to do unfair ways to get revenue, with like confusing parket, parking tickets and double-dipping for the, uh, when you get towed, you get a parking ticket and you get towed.
Mr. President, it's not on the agenda.
So it's unfair, and now these liens with the silly, confusing ways that they, uh, with different rules that they go against, like if their fence is too tall, and, uh, little silly things while these big corporations go big with big problems. And so, um, that's really unfair to do the, uh, this, that, these liens. And you got to find a better way, like get rid of your pet projects in your resolutions and worrying about foreign countries and making, uh, and bowing down to them. So let's go, not go after these liens. It gets like, I'm not sure about, I'm hoping that Kevin James is good. I'm hoping he's not a snowflake, that he's not, there's going to be a nice liberal that will go good with Eric Garcetti. So, um, because we don't need any more silly liberals running around going rules against , uh, consumers.
Get on our item, get on our item.
And, uh, let's see here with the sidewalk repair. I hope that we do the sidewalk repair. I hope it actually gets done and not just get a partial, uh, sidewalk repair. And it looks to me like these people are, um, side repair, construction services, consulting services, that we're overpaying these people, that they don't seem to care about actually trying to make sidewalks without paying lots of other people, administrators, uh, that's actually being done, not just actually paving the sidewalks. So I don't like that. And lastly, I want to say about the number twenty-four, a reward for information, uh, yeah, so again, stitches get snitches, and we want to be able to, we should be able to defend ourselves, then we wouldn't have to worry about being, uh, having to have shooting deaths of people. Uh, we can, they wouldn't think about trying to shoot people if they knew that people were packing, people were responsible, people who know how to use the gun, should be having classes, so they know that for sure they know how to shoot properly. And so then, we wouldn't have this problem, because the police won't be everywhere, even in front of LAPD. You can get your stuff vandalized, and they won't do anything. And I'm going to go on.
Let's give her her minute. Erica, if we could get her general public comment minute.
Let me get the, oh, maybe get the, oh, yes. Okay. We need, uh, congressmen who care about constituents, not their special interests. Vote for Omar, Omar Navarro next year. Don't fart from vaccine waters. Eric R. City, City Council Democrats and their liberal followers are not helping immigration. Our President Donald Trump is only going after, uh, criminal illegal aliens, not deporting any more than it was done in the past. With sanctuary cities, our courts may have to deport all illegals, and it won't be President Trump's fault. I got a deplorable shirt on underneath. It will be your fault, Democrats, City Council, liberals and your May Day march followers who are paid by George Soros to march, and it's always the liberals who throw things at the other side, hit and injure Trump supporters, vandalize property, uh, and start fights with Trump supporters, not the other way around. And it won't be, they don't, they won't have a peaceful debate when you deport all these liens.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, if I can get Mr. Walsh to come forward. But, uh, Madam Clerk, let's close, uh, the hearing on, uh, public comment on item twenty-one. Mr. Walsh, you have items one, A, B, C, uh, fourteen, fifteen, A, B, sixteen, seventeen,
Uh, number one, building and safety. I've been living here since seventy-six. First time I lived here was nineteen seventy, and you do a good job. I'm not one of those weak guys that get up and say, "You're all a bunch of crooks." That's not me. There are plenty of those guys here. You can listen to them. Number fourteen is, uh, this is, uh, reappointment of Kevin James to the Board of Public Works. What a weasel. The man was in the far right. He was in the far right, and now he's wearing Mayor, this is before Mayor Garcetti. Now he wears Garcetti's kneepads, or I should say Glenn Deeks kneepads that he, uh, he borrows from him. Kevin James is the only person in this city politician that makes me sick to my stomach. None of you, and most of you agree with me. I can see one person smiling when I say, "He makes you sick to your stomach." Uh, now, the next one is, uh, exclusive negotiating agreement, number seventeen. There should be no exclusive negotiating agreements. That means the price is fixed. Number seventeen, I mean, number eighteen, this is, uh, proposals, developers for the disposition and development of housing assets. There's no more phony business happening in housing assets. Uh, a, a, a housing, a unit built publicly is three times as much as a unit, uh, built privately. Number, uh, number twenty. This is, uh, relative to adjustments to current, adjustment always means they're jacking the price up. They're never going to talk about any of this crap. And this is Buscaino and Krikorian. This is appropriations to sidewalk repair. Uh, we're talking about a million dollars, a million dollars here, a million dollars there. It all adds up. Your sidewalks are crap. They're falling apart. It is not west of La Brea where my people live, the Jews, not west of La Brea, east of La Brea, where the blacks and the Hispanics live, okay? And what's left of the poor whites. There aren't many of them left anymore. Okay, uh, I'm going to go now. I'm going to make a present of ten seconds.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay. We had a gigantic, uh, demonstration yesterday. The question, the demonstrators claimed they were going to get a hundred thousand. The police say it was fifteen thousand. Let me tell you why the police are wrong. You can just take whatever the police say, their estimate, and double it. It wasn't as much as the, as the develop, as the people who were running the, uh, the organization did, because there's a churn. There are people in and out for four or five hours. At any one moment, there were probably fifteen or twenty thousand people there. But when you talk about something that started at, what, ten in the morning and ended at four, about six hours, that, that was the way it is. Now, Sadio, LA Times has gotten rid of the racist scumbag that was running against Sadio, and, uh, we're the ones who basically pushed, uh, and got all the dirt on his campaign competitor.
Thank you. Okay, so that, uh, ends, uh, multi-comment and general public comment. Let's vote on items, Madam Clerk, fourteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-four, and twenty-five. In fact, my bad, items fourteen through eighteen. Items twenty, twenty-four, and twenty-five. We're good? Okay, on those items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
They are approved. Mr. Rue, I'd like to defer to you at this time.
Mr. President, I think you're joining us, too. And the mayor is here.
Good morning, welcome, guys. How are you?
Okay, we'll wait for the president.
Welcome. Good to have you here. Welcome. Good to have you. Nice to meet you.
So, good morning. Good morning, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Your city hall. Today, I am incredibly proud to kick off Asian Pacific American Heritage Month with our great mayor, Eric Garcetti, our council president, Herb Wesson, and the cast and executive producers of Fresh Off the Boat. Every May, communities across the United States pay a month-long tribute to the multi-generations and to millions of Asian Pacific Americans who have enriched America's culture, economy, and history. For the last three decades, the city of Los Angeles has hosted a series of events throughout the month of May to highlight the significant contributions that Asian Pacific Americans have made to the city's past, present, and future. This year, we couldn't think of a better way to highlight these contributions than honoring this iconic and historic television show. And today, we declare May second, two thousand seventeen, as Fresh Off the Boat Day in the city of Los Angeles. Fresh Off the Boat is a hit American sitcom series that first aired on February fourth, two thousand fifteen, on ABC. It focuses on the lives of a Taiwanese-American immigrant family who clashes with mainstream American culture. It's a comical and all-too-familiar attempt to assimilate and embrace the American dream. And you don't have to be Asian-American to relate, like trying to explain to your neighbors where you're really from, receiving compliments on your great English skills, and even feeling like an outcast in a cafeteria because your lunch looks, tastes, or smells differently. And I know many in this room can relate to these stories, and Fresh Off the Boat represents a milestone for the Asian-American and immigrant community. It is the first Asian-American television sitcom in over twenty years, featuring an Asian-Pacific-American family to air on a major network in prime time. We can't, we can't forget the first, which is All American Girl, starring Margaret Cho. And we have come a very long way. And today's celebration showcases our city's diverse tapestry and reaffirms our commitment to the inclusion of all people, no matter your race, background, and immigration, or immigration status. I am incredibly proud now to introduce and serve my community in the Los Angeles, along with my very good friend, a leader of the most diverse city, and one of the most diverse cities in the world, and co-chair of today's celebrations, Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Thank you for your leadership and for your breakthrough, because joining this council meant that for Asian and Asian-American and Pacific Islander children growing up in this city, they can picture themselves here now. They can see themselves going on. One day, there will be a president who is Asian-American, we hope. And Los Angeles has been from its founding, a city that was founded with its Pacific links strong. In fact, we all know the story of the pobladores, but two of them that often aren't counted were the two Asian pobladores settlers who settled, came from Mexico. And Antonio Miranda Rodriguez, a fifty-year-old Filipino, and his eleven-year-old daughter set out. Unfortunately, they got sick on the way and had to return, but in some ways, it's a fitting metaphor, that back then, as we had folks that traced their ancestry to Africa and to Europe, who traced their ancestry, obviously, to the Americas as well, as well as those who had their links in Asia, were part of the founding seed of this city. And we have so much rich history, some of it tragic and some of it glorious. We remember at moments like this and learn that history of what it was like when the first Chinese immigrants came here, just north of downtown. We mark and commemorate at a time when there was about two-hundred-and-thirty-five Chinese residents of this city, the riots that happened that resulted in nine of the, nineteen, excuse me, of those Chinese Angelinos losing their lives in eighteen seventy-one. We think of the Chinese laborers who helped build the railway that linked Northern and Southern California in eighteen seventy-six, three-hundred-and-thirty laborers who built what was then the largest tunnel in the United States west of the Mississippi, the San Fernando Tunnel, that brought into the San Fernando Valley that train, that railroad line. We remember the fountain pen boys, Filipinos who came here in the nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties, who were the clerks of the city of the day, who, uh, settled at Main Los Angeles streets, where they, the only place that they were allowed to live, which later became Little Tokyo, but at the time was known as Little Manila. We remember the Japanese-Americans who were here, what they went through to not only establish incredible, um, industry in gardening and landscaping, but then what they experienced in the internment camps. Uh, the Canneries on Terminal Island down by San Pedro, where Filipinos and Japanese-Americans worked in, in those places. And now, today, in this city, which has Chinatown, Little Tokyo, Koreatown, Historic Filipino Town, Little Bangladesh, uh, we see the diverse reflection, not just of Asian-Americans, but of the entire Pacific region and the Asian continent, one of the largest populations of Mongolians outside of Mongolia, the largest population of Thais outside of Thailand, and I should have added Thai Town to that as well. Uh, we have the most incredibly diverse city. It enriches our culture, our politics, our food, uh, our stomachs, our hearts, our heads, our minds. And I want to just thank Fresh Off the Boat. My wife and I are big fans. Uh, in the few minutes we have before we fall asleep after tucking our daughter in bed, we're so happy when a new episode comes on, because it tells a quintessentially American story, one that we all relate to, but voices and faces that have too often been written out in Hollywood. Um, and I'm so pleased that Disney and ABC has not only, uh, greenlit this, but continues to invest in it. And, uh, Randall, I'm glad that you're no longer governor of Washington. Um, it was a big political threat to my future when you were on Veep, but now that the work that you all are doing to ensure, uh, that, that America recognizes our destiny, and I'll close on this, we need this picture more than ever. At this moment, when people try to pull us apart, this is something that pulls us all together, and doesn't matter what Washington's producing, it matters what we're producing right here in Hollywood, because that is the face of America. So happy Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to everybody. Let's go celebrate the contributions of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And now I'd like to welcome the leader of our Los Angeles City Council, Council President Herb Wesson.
Thank you. I want to thank, uh, thank you, David. Thank you a lot. It's always a, a pleasure to spend time with you, and of course, whenever the mayor returns to these chambers, it's a joyous moment for so, so many of us. I have stood on this council floor on numerous occasions and talked about that we all live in the greatest country on this planet, even with our flaws, even with our pimples. The United States of America is the greatest country that there is. Let's give our country round of applause. But what makes us great is our wondrous variety of people. That's what makes us strong. That's what makes us so great. And I can remember as a young man, uh, where, where's Ian? Ian, I can remember, I can remember when I was your age, and I would turn on the television, and I wouldn't see anybody that looked like me. And it was disturbing. So to me, it is important that when we watch television, that we try to depict the real world and real issues. Now, when I was a young man, I'm looking over here at Mr. Harris Dawson, in my neighborhood, every Saturday morning, when Soul Train came on, all you would hear is this.
Come on, show us.
And when Sanford and Son would come on at Friday night, one of the first African-American sitcoms, for that half hour, it was silence. And, and- And, and, so it's just so important that we just show everybody what's happening, and everyone should be included. We are Los Angeles. When we look out into a crowd, and if that crowd is not diverse, we believe something is wrong. All you have to do is look around these council chambers. That's what makes us great. Our people make us great. And when you watch programs like Fresh Off the Boat, you find out that we are all the same. And the only thing that separates us are some cultural differences that really should be celebrated. Now, this show, which I have watched from time to time, where's, I'm really, I think it's Hudson, right? Come here. When I started watching this show, you were shorter than me. But it started out with, with, sorry, with a young man, 12-years-old, experiencing life. It is a hilarious show, folks, and it is a classy show. I mean, remember, when you're 12, and you're, you're gonna try to have a sleepover with the guys, and he's in competition with another guy, and he suggests that he has X-rated movies for the boys to watch. So, of course, they want to come to his house to find out that this is a sexual harassment training video. Or when, again, young Ian, and, and then this, where's, is it Forrest? You, you are the coolest, and you've grown too, with your, I, I tell you, yeah. But I mean, this is a great show, and you should watch it. The bank scene, where you're gonna get your first bank account and can't figure out what, what name, you know, is he gonna use his Chinese name? Is he gonna use this name that he's so proud of, Evan, that he found out that he was named after a female nurse, which changed his whole... And I tell you, when I usually watch a show, I have a favorite. It's hard to have a favorite on this show, but Grandma Jenny. So, for everybody that's here, if you have an ink pen or a book, hide it, because she'll walk away with it if it is not tied down. But anyway, we are so excited to have you here. You represent everything that's great in this country, and I'm just so excited. Sorry to, to rattle on a bit, David, but I am a fan of a show, the show, and to the producers and the writers, this is really good work. This is classy, classy, classy work. So, I'm honored to be part of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if you haven't seen the show, I know you're gonna want to watch it now. Exactly. We got the executive producers here, so maybe they could write you in. And, and actually, the mayor does have a SAG card. He's already an actor.
Oh, David, you messed up now. You gotta write him in.
So, thank you, Mr. President. You know, Louis and Jessica's storyline, Fresh Off the Boat, played by Randall Park and Constance Wu, is, is very similar to my own story. You know, I immigrated to the United States when I was six-years-old from South Korea, and I grew up just a little south of Los Feliz. And my parents struggled day and night, and eventually saved enough money to open up a toy store in Koreatown. Now, you might be thinking Toys R Us, but actually, it was more like a little mini swap meet. And I remember at 10-years-old, I was standing on a chair to help my parents at the cash register, as well as translation. You know, like Louis and Jessica, my parents took advantage of the opportunities available to them in America. They worked countless hours, saved money religiously, and dreamt of a brighter future for me and my two siblings, my little brother, who's at the corner over there. And, and, and as the first Korean-American and the second-only Asian and Pacific-American elected to the Los Angeles City Council, I owe a tremendous debt to my parents, especially to my mother. Especially to my mother, who is here today, and to the countless other parents and families who helped pave the way for the next generation. So, I am so proud to be here today to celebrate Fresh Off the Boat Day, because I too was once fresh off the boat myself. This show ushers in a new generation of young actors, talent, and creatives who will shape the future of the arts, media, and media here in Hollywood. Most importantly, Fresh Off the Boat relays the importance of diversity. Now more than ever, we need diverse thinkers, leaders, and storytellers who understand the unique experiences of immigrants in our communities of tomorrow. With that, let's see a clip, a few clips of Fresh Off the Boat.
My parents were born in Taiwan, but my brothers and I were born in DC.
Oh, your English is very good.
This is why.
This is why what?
This is why we moved here. There is opportunity here to make a better life for our family. Things were okay for us back in DC, but I want more than okay for us.
Yo, Chinese kid. What's your name again? Something Chinese.
I'm Chu Tsai-sa.
Chu Tsai-sa.
Chu Tsai-sa.
Chu Tsai-ta.
What does it mean?
Colorful sunset glow?
Maybe we can call you Glow, which everyone can pronounce.
It's Huang. Huang, Wang, it don't matter.
Hung-yi-yai.
Yeah, call me Eddie.
We don't get opportunities to be on TV. That's why when we do, we need to present our best face.
We need to talk.
It's called the Asian Flush. It's an allergic reaction. It doesn't affect everyone. Your mom and grandma don't have it.
This is like an all-body heat.
Are we Chinese enough?
What?
Marvin says sometimes he forgets we're Chinese. Maybe he's forgetting because we're forgetting.
Look, Jessica, we're doing fine. We're so Chinese.
What's for dinner, Mom?
Macaroni and cheese.
With bacon bits.
We need to reconnect with our culture. Don't surround ourselves with white people doing white things.
You know what's a white thing? Hanging up a Buddha picture. Michael Chang is in the Australian Open. We are witnessing history. You boys are so lucky to have an Asian pro athlete to look up to. It's way more than what I have. Ooh, hell yeah, Chen Ho! That was a flagrant takedown. Wait till referee! He's Asian.
How are their socks longer than their shorts? I'm out.
Tiger Woods? That guy is dope.
Tiger's also half-Asian.
I've seen Tiger's dad, Earl, and he's definitely African-American.
Right, and his mom is Thai.
Come on!
I still don't understand how mom is not a citizen if I'm a citizen.
Because you boys were born here. And I'm a citizen because I applied for the green card lottery, and then I naturalized. And after that, I sponsored Grandma, who also then naturalized to become a citizen.
And now, she gets to stay here forever.
I decided I'm going to apply for citizenship.
That's fantastic.
I want to be able to vote, and to be on Wheel of Fortune one day.
Let's just wrap this up with a pledge of allegiance. I, Jessica, take you, the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
Welcome all of you new American citizens.
We did it, Louis. We moved to America, and we made it. We are the success story.
I guess we are. It's the American way, right?
You know about that.
I would now like to welcome Fresh Off the Boat's executive producer and showrunner, Nanachka Khan.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. This is such a huge honor for us. We're really humbled by Fresh Off the Boat Day. You never really think that this is where you're gonna end up in any capacity. You know, you try to write a good pilot, and you try to make a good TV show, and so this is just, this is incredible. On behalf of all the writers and everybody, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to tell these stories. And we're so excited to continue to tell these stories, because there's so many more stories to tell. And, you know, personally, for me, I'm gonna treat Fresh Off the Boat Day as a national holiday. I will never work again on May 2, going forward. I hope all my employers are fine with that. And I just really am humbled, and I want to thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to welcome executive producer Melvin Marr to also provide a few remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryu, Council President Wesson, and Mayor Garcetti. Making Fresh Off the Boat has been one of my great honors, professional and personally. I want to thank everyone at ABC, 20th Century Fox TV, for their support, Eddie Wong for writing a book that inspired the thing. What a treat it's been to work with this amazing, groundbreaking group. From our cast, Randall, Constance, Hudson, Forrest, Ian, and Chelsea, to our writers, some of the best on TV, to our producer, Justin, who makes everything happen, and our wonderful crew who's here. And of course, my partners, Notch and Jake. It's, it's been unbelievable and just an incredible honor for me and my family, which sort of brings me to just reminiscing a little bit. My family was, is just from a couple miles up the road in Chinatown. And my, my father owned a bean sprout and restaurant supply company, and we would make, you know, deliveries all over Chinatown, all over LA. And I would follow him as a little kid. I would be in the truck, and I just remember passing, you know, City Hall one day and pointing at it and saying, "What is that?" And he said, you know, "City, LA City Hall." And I said, "Well, you know, as a five-year-old," I was like, "Well, who lives there?" You know? And he said, "The mayor and a lot of important people." And I, I said, you know, "Have you been there?" He said, "No." So, on behalf of my father, it's been an incredible honor. Thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to welcome a comedian, writer, and producer, and a good friend, Randall Park, who plays Louis Wong. I'm Fresh Off the Boat!
Gosh, thank you so much. On behalf of the cast, including Constance Wu and Ray Wise, who couldn't be here today, just wanted to say thank you so much. Hope this means we get a season four. We're still waiting on the official word. This should make it happen. But honestly, we're so proud and thankful and happy just to be working on this show, and we're just so lucky to be able to shoot it here in the great city of Los Angeles, a city so talented that it has the chameleon-like ability to pass as Orlando in the 1990s. LA is also where I was born and raised, and growing up here, I had a great childhood. I went to Palms Middle School and Hamilton High School, and I had a really loving, sometimes dysfunctional, family, a colorful group of friends, got myself into many adventures. But rarely did I get to see my unique Asian-American experience reflected in the movies or on TV. Occasionally, a trail would be blazed by someone like Pat Marita or Margaret Cho, amongst others. But the perspectives coming out of Hollywood remained and still remains predominantly one-sided. So, for me, it is an honor that today we're being recognized for our show that's helping to change things. So, on behalf of the cast, I'd like to just thank Notch, Melvin, Jake, Eddie Wong, our amazing writers, our entire crew, ABC 20th, and thank you to this great city. Thank you, Mayor Garcetti, Councilman Ru, Herb Wesson, and all of you here. We really appreciate this. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you again to ABC for starting the show and for Fox, Fox, 20th Century Fox for producing it. The city of Los Angeles is very proud to honor and celebrate Fresh Off the Boat Day for its creativity and work in uplifting the Asian-Pacific-American communities. Thank you so very much, and congratulations.
Mr. Ru? Mr. Ru? Mr. Ru, we have two members on the queue. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ru, and, and mayor, and, and Council President Wesson. To the cast and creators of Fresh Off the Boat, I just wanted to rise and thank you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and our community. You all probably already know this. I was surprised to learn Fresh Off the Boat is one of the highest-rated television programs amongst African-Americans in the United States. That's a big deal. I think that deserves a big round of applause. And, and, and when we watch it, I, you know, I grew up in the 80s, like the mayor. When we watch it, I just can't help remember what The Cosby Show did for this country in the 80s. I believe today, you all are, Fresh Off the Boat is doing for this country what The Cosby Show did then. In a few years, it will be completely normal to see Asian-American experiences and Asian-American families on TV, on radio, and in music. So, thank you all on behalf of the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Sadio? Mr. Sadio?
Councilmember, Mr. President, and, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for doing this. This is so important in the Trump era. All things that display and show honestly, what the American experience is, is vital and important, and it's something that we should do every single day. Mr. Mayor, I'm always impressed at how easily you can call off historic events that were challenging for us as a state and as a city, and that today, we are much better in embracing the diversity of our community. I've always been fortunate to represent significant API communities, and I've been fortunate to have staff and interns, like Mr. Ru's sister, who worked in my office. Like my first encounter with Councilmember Ru, I was the first elected official he ever met, 20 years ago, and he still ran for office. So, I, I just want to take this one second to acknowledge my staff at the moment, because they play such a critical role in my district. I almost said Kimberly U. Debbie Kim is here on the floor. Debbie Kim. Tony Recasa has returned to my office. Mal Elomann has been with me since day one, when I was elected to the Assembly. Sharon Lowe is up at her desk, figuring out how to get money for our projects. Gerald Gubaton is up in his corner, laying out plans and schematics and architectural designs, because he's their top planner. There you go. And so, I just want to thank them. This is a time period for us to come together. Yesterday, thousands and thousands of us marched on May Day, both for workers and for immigrants. This is uniquely a city of immigrants. As you know, I come from Borah Heights, and I came from Borah Heights when it was extremely diverse and rich. And I always talk about growing up in Borah Heights because of the richness of that experience and the diversity and what it did to help shape my life, my dear friends that I grew up with, like Brian Miyakawa and his mom, who was a surrogate mom for us, like Sylvia Sue and her great friendship and the friendship of her family, neighbors who lived next door to us, people who had experienced the interns, internships, the Japanese-American members of our community, the Chinese merchants, all vital. I applaud what was called Young's Market, because they gave us credit and made sure that we had the milk and the eggs and the meats that we needed to sustain our family, even during difficult time periods of low production in my dad's factory. So, it was a very rich experience, and FOB embodies that, is honest, has integrity, tells the story. the story of being American hyphenated, which is really the American experience. And so for all of you, best wishes. I thank you, and I thank you, David, for bringing this to our attention. God bless.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number one.
Madam President, on item number one, there are requests to continue one C, E, O, Q, and S for 30 days to May 31st.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. We have one speaker on item one, Timmy Chin. Are you here? Sir, come on up. I think you're speaking on item one B.
Yes.
Can I ask the members of the audience if you can please lower your voices or make your way out of the council chambers? We need to resume our meeting. Sergeants, can you help me quiet down the room in the back? Thank you. Sergeants, can you please help me escort our friends outside our council chambers? We need to resume our meeting. It's way too loud in here. Mr. Chin, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
This has sort of been a Twilight Zone kind of episode in my life today. I thought I was actually gonna be in front of a window, and instead I'm in front of the city council. I just wanted to appeal my, appeal the fines that I have here for $2,729.70. This is a rental property that I have, and I never got any notices about these fines. I know what the fines are for. They were for a fence not being around a pool and a pool that was neglected. I had taken care of all of these issues. An inspector came out and said, "Everything is okay, and you'll get something in the mail that will clear." And I never got anything, and this was two years ago. And so like I said, it's kind of like a Twilight Zone event. I'm experiencing this Asian-Pacific Islander event, and then I'm here in front of the city council. So I just wanted to ask for an appeal or some other kind of...
Sir, I'm gonna have someone from Council District 12 meet you here behind the ropes, to your right. She will help you sort this out. Thank you. Let's move on to item one C, Madam Clerk, Lillian Gracie. Are you here for item one C? Lillian Gracie? There is no one here by that name, and there's another card, Lillian. It sounds like it's the same person. She might have filled out two cards. That person is not here. Mr. Bonin?
For one C, we didn't get a chance to talk to the constituent, but if we could continue that 30 days.
Okay, let's continue one C for 30 days, which will be May 31st. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Let's move on to item one E. Enrique Escobedo, are you here? Item one E, Enrique Escobedo. That person is not here. Let's move on to item one Q, Rodolfo Rhea. Rodolfo Rhea on item one Q. That person's not here either. Let's move on to one S. Malcolm Lewis. Item one S, Malcolm Lewis. That person's not here either. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the remainder. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 21. I believe there's a substitute motion that was also circulated.
Yes, that substitute motion has been posted and circulated.
Let's go ahead and vote on the substitute. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the votes. That matters before us now. Have a number of cards on item... There are no cards on item 21. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, we're ready to hear item three. That was called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, on item three, there is a typo in the Plumb Report, so I've moved that we fix the typo and then continue the item till Friday. And it is changing one word, except to the word exceed in the report.
Is there a second for Mr. O'Farrell's amendment? Mr. Buscayna will second that.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on that item now as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
And that item will be continued till Friday, May 5th. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any? Go ahead, Madam Clerk. The desk is clear now?
The desk is clear.
Are there any announcements? Any announcements, Mr. Harris-Dawson? You look like you have an announcement. No announcements. General public was open and closed and done. Item three's been continued to Friday, May 5th. Members, can we please rise and members of the public for adjourned motions? Our members of the audience, can we please rise for our adjourned motions, please? Members of the audience. Thank you. Adjourned motions to my right. Any adjourned motions? Seeing none. To my left, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members. I asked today that we adjourn in the memory of a community legend and a giant in the food world, Mr. Adolf Doolin. Mr. Adolf Doolin was the self-proclaimed king of soul food. He began learning to cook on a farm in Luther, Oklahoma, while working next to his mother as she made the family meals. Before building his empire, Adolf graduated from Langston University and HBCU and then went on to the Army and worked for the post office and began serving families as a Los Angeles County social worker after that. In 1975, he left his job and took a risk, all of his personal savings, and opened up a Orange Julius location in South Los Angeles. This was the beginning of his food empire. In 1997, in 1977, he transitioned the Orange Julius into a neighborhood family-run restaurant by the name of Hamburger City. The business flourished, and by 1978, he opened a second location. By '82, there were five Hamburger City locations throughout the city of Los Angeles and an additional one in Marina Del Rey. That restaurant quickly grew and had to move to bigger quarters, and his location in Marina Del Rey became nationally and internationally known as he transitioned that into a Southern-style home-cooking restaurant called Aunt Kizzy's Back Porch. Aunt Kizzy's Back Porch flourished, became the center of soul food cooking everywhere in the United States. That was the place you could find hat-wearing church members after church. You could find members of the Los Angeles Lakers or Dodgers. You could find all sorts of celebrities there as that was the center of the soul food empire here in Southern California. After the success of Aunt Kizzy's Back Porch, along with his family, he started the Doolin Soul Food chain, of which there are two restaurants in my district now and four more throughout Southern California. And the Doolins family, led by Adolf Doolin, led a renaissance of African-American and soul food-themed restaurants throughout Southern California. The Doolins family is the first family of soul food here in Los Angeles. We lost him just yesterday. He leaves behind his children, a host of grandchildren, and of course, the great and tasty soul food that we can still get to this day.
Mr. Price would like to join on your adjourned motion. Any other adjourned motions, Mr. Sadio?
Yes, it's with great sadness and misfortune for us that Hank Lakayo, a longtime union leader of the United Auto Workers, a member of LAKLA, and a very significant civic leader in our community, passed away yesterday. Hank was living up in Channel Islands, up in Ventura. Hank was an extraordinary labor leader at a time when Latinos had very limited space in the labor movement. The UAW, one of the more progressive labor unions from the CIO, had space for Latino leadership, including Congressman Esteban Torres, Hank Lakayo, and others who are also involved in politics. He's a, he has an institute named after him in Channel Islands. He's what was referred to as a go-to person. If there were any political issues or matters that people approached me on up in Ventura, I would always say, "Go see Hank. If Hank's with you, then you're fine, and you'll be taken care of." He was an advisor to presidents, worked with President Jimmy Carter, was in the administration. And he was truly one of these rare persons who could link the labor movement with politics and do so in a way that served both very, very well. He was quite debonair, quite distinguished. He was a very sophisticated man and a man of great class and style. I remember the privilege and the honor I had of meeting him and showing him my work at Local 660 SEIU and just spending all this time with him, trying to impress upon him the work that we were doing that was following his legacy with the United Auto Workers. He was a great friend and a great mentor, and he will be sorely missed by working men and women in this city, the state, and in this nation.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. I would like to join you on that adjournment. Mr. Koritz?
Yeah, I'd also like to join on that adjournment, and I would just note that this has been a devastating last few weeks for the Jewish Labor Committee, who first lost our executive director, Leslie Kursakov, and then Hank Lakayo in recent years has been very, very involved in the Jewish Labor Committee, and I had not heard that till this moment, and I'm very sad to hear about his passing.
Yeah, he was a great man. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.